So, welcome everyone and it is six oh four on March twenty first, I will call our planning commission meeting to order. And our first business is a roll call.
Commissioner Brierls?
Here.
Commissioner Gable?
Here.
Commissioner Geiger? Commissioner Burunda?
Here.
Commissioner Abrams? Commissioner Hamilton? Commissioner Nolan?
You have a forum, so we're looking forward, our second agenda item is approval of the minutes, and it's our official.
Okay, Nolan, I do wanna recognize Commissioner Hamilton online.
Ah, good.
Sybo, I'm also online too. Peter Gable?
I did call, and I think I heard here.
So.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Hamilton?
I think he's speaking with his mic.
Okay, well do feel free to IM in and then we'll see those if your mic doesn't work, Dave. So then we will move on to our approval of the minutes, so we had the planning commission meeting minutes from February, which were in the packet that's available online. Hopefully everyone had a chance to review those. Were there any corrections noted for those?
I do. Commissioner Gable?
Okay.
We also discussed zoning and accommodating and potentially recruiting corporate offices in the lucrative aeronautical industry. I'd like to have that noted in the minutes, please.
Commissioner Gable, I think that is noted in the minutes. I maybe you may be right, you may, let's see. Okay, so additional policy language, the commissioners suggested include zoning to accommodate office offices that would support the restaurant industry, exploring minimum wage increase and recruiting corporations to the city of Mill Creek.
Okay, I was looking for the word aeronautics. I think that was, that was a concern of mine is that that since a big part of the base of the employees in Mill Creek, according to the presentation last month, are in the food industry and in the grocery stores, there was a concern that they may not be able to have the income to sustain new businesses. And so I was just.
So would that language suffice or would you like to?
Maybe you could, could you add to restaurants, could you add aeronautical corporate offices as well?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so any other addition, changes?
So, point of order, that would be a suggest, and she would be making a motion to amend the minutes.
Yeah, that was.
And there would need to be a second, and then we need to vote on amending the minutes.
Yeah, so first I was gonna see if we had any other amendments suggested.
We should probably work once at a, one at a time.
Okay, so are all in favor of, well, is there a second to that motion to amend the minutes?
Second by Dave.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other additional changes? Hearing done, then as amended, could I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the meeting?
Motion to accept the minutes from the February meeting as amended.
A second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we'll move on. I don't believe we have any hearings today. Okay, so that moves us to briefings and discussion, and city manager is here to provide us a briefing. Thank you so much.
Point of privilege, actually. Could we get the, the meeting is being recorded notification cleared from the screen? Cause that's what's showing, that's what's being broadcasted. I think it might be on the screen that's at the lectern. Right in the middle and it's blocking, you know, forty percent of the screen. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Nolan, commissioners in-house and those of you remote, thank you. And I'm here, usually quarterly update, but I didn't wanna give you so much kinda what we did last year. I'm gonna focus more on kinda what's going on this year, kinda key things and should take probably five minutes here. So, and then while I can answer any questions that you have. One of the big things we're working on this year is our twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget. And that process will start early on, probably earlier this year, given a lot of decisions that we have to make in terms of our resources, staffing, equipment, services, and so forth. So, big process again, plan to go through November of this year. The second one, as you are aware, is that is a comp plan. And then I'm not gonna go too much into detail about that, cause you're already aware kinda what's going on there. That's planned through November, according to my calendar. DRCC Phase One, concept, recent information from Director Dodd, that our delineation of the wetlands is anticipated to start next week on the twenty-seventh. So, concept discussions will start sometime months after that, probably after we get community engagement and so forth going. The other big one, and this one is, I think really important to all of us, not just here at the planning commission, but also staff, a DRB board, AMB, just all the boards and commissions, the entire city, is our nineteen sixty-one consulting, a consultant that we hired to help us define our twenty forty vision. As well as, as well as help us determine what our three to five-year resource planning is that will drive a lot of decision-making that we will make moving forward for that long-term vision. In that process, that will go through April. What's really important is that we've really, we'll, as I mentioned, define kind of how we make these decisions. There are three key elements to that, that we found, the council and the leadership team put together with the consultant, that really underpin kinda the decisions that we're gonna make going forward, and it will provide four key areas that the city will be focusing on in terms of that twenty-year vision. And I'll just briefly kinda go over those, those areas, give you kind of a sense of kinda what we're thinking. In April or early May, when those deliverables come in, I will give a copy to everyone on the commission here, and so you have an idea, so that we can all be on the same page as to kinda how we move forward in our direction. So, the first one is financial health and economic vitality. That's, I won't go into too much detail about that. But you kinda get a sense of kinda what we're staying in terms of how we wanna be fiscally responsible and ensure that we address the economic strategy piece of our, of our long-term plan. Being safe and clean, this refers to both public safety and how we manage our infrastructure across the city. Two big things we're working on right now, the safe streets for all, as you're probably aware, and also the pavement preservation program. So, two key CIP projects on the public works list. Thriving, engaged, and connected community. Community is important, a lot of discussion about trails, walking paths, connecting sidewalks, posting on certain communities within our city, but also how to connect those, those, those core areas. Farm example, town center here, and into the future, as we develop more communities, and so transportation's a big piece. And the last one is well-maintained outdoors, public spaces and infrastructure. We wanna be recognized as one of the most walkable cities in Washington. That's, that's one of council's and leadership priorities. As well as working on those public spaces that are, should be well-maintained, accessible, accessible for all community members. So, maintaining those infrastructures and, and things across the city is really important. So, that kinda gives you a sense of what are, what we're thinking in terms of our long-term vision. Again, as we get this nailed down in April, and those deliverables are come forward from our consultant, I'll give you a copy of those. And with that, I'll take any questions regarding anything I've talked about.
Do have a question. So was that, so hearing that the, one of the goals is most walkable cities. Have we also, we have plenty of driving space and we do have some walking space, which is great, especially with those sidewalks connecting so many of our communities, and it's great to hear that we're looking at expanding that. I was also wondering about dedicated bike paths as another route that we might take to have increased physical activity for our residents and for other people who might be interested in visiting our town center, our farm, etc., any of our economic centers. And how we might do that, and when I mention dedicated, I mean not intended for pedestrian and not intended for motor vehicle, but intended solely for bicycle or similar kind of vehicle. So I wonder if we, if there's any goal for that, or if there's any thought about that. I know we have some bike lanes throughout the city. I, we don't have them so much protected beyond anything other than paint on the road. So I was wondering if there was a possibility of expansion of that.
There's, there's nothing, there's nothing mentioned of bike lanes or that type of mobility on this, but I think what's implied here is that that's something that will be discussed, is something that came up in discussions, and so I'll bring that forward to the consultant and see if it does imply in this too.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Hi, this is Commissioner Gable. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a cell, small cellphone and I can't find a way to raise my hand, so forgive me for that. I did have a question. I know at the last meeting, which was very productive. I had, I had a concern that although this is a very walkable city and it's our goal to keep that, there's no place to rest, and there's no, doesn't seem to be outside of that small lot in front of Central Market, the old Central Market. There's not a real place to have a common space where people could, could lounge and rest. And Justin, you had mentioned that the council or staff were already considering something like that. Could you elaborate a little bit and see how that can complement the walkable city part?
Sure, so yeah, staff has discussed having something like that in the, in the sub-area. There's no concrete or firm plans for it. However, we have discussed having sort of a, possibly a civic space where people could gather in the sub-area. Also possibility of having a pedestrianized street with amenities like benches and landscaping that make a nice place to, to gather and to stroll. So we definitely have it on our, it's on our radar, but we don't have any firm plans until we, we push forward with the sub-area plan.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just add, I would, I would really like to support the idea of a pedestrianized street. I think that's a great idea and it really can drive some very, some great foot traffic to local businesses. And just has a great sense of community to it.
Okay, any other questions for, for city manager? Come on, dude, okay. Hearing done, thank you so much for coming in and.
Thank you.
Updating this. So that leads us to agenda item C, briefing discussions, the twenty-four comprehensive plan update. I will turn it back over.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Mandy Roberts from OTAC here to kick us off tonight. And if we go to the next slide. Tonight, we're going to be, oh, sorry, that, that's fine, we can stay here. So tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit about housing and some of the background work that we've done, which we have had some conversations about that. We're gonna go into a little bit more detail and introduce the housing goals and policies. And so we'll be handing those over to the commission this evening. Maybe you'll get an email tomorrow, right?
It's already sent out this afternoon.
Very good job, okay. And then in the April meeting, we'll be discussing your comments that we'll receive prior to that meeting and consolidate and review. And then just a little bit of a heads up with this slide. We had, had a little bit of a, of a break in our review process, February to May, but now we're gonna be hitting it hard as we go forward and issuing draft content each month and reviewing it the next month. And this is the order of the comprehensive plan elements that we'll be reviewing together. So we look forward to that. Land use is always a little bit more intense, because that's really what the comprehensive plan's all about, is land use. So, we took some time with that, and now we'll be, we'll be focusing on housing, which is also intense. And Andrew will talk about that in a moment. And then from there, we'll go through the other elements that you see listed here. And then once we get to August, we'll be stitching everything together into the draft plan and have a full draft plan ready for you guys to look at. So, be more September upon that note, but yeah.
I do wanna recognize that September is also like the month that most commissioners were gone.
Okay.
So, because of, you know, summer holidays and kids not being in school, so we do, we have an ice truck. Yeah, in August, so, so, sorry. Would you have that in mind, just in case there is no quorum and how to fit that in our schedules?
You have a little bit of time to work with, so, thank you. All right, I think then we will turn it over to Andrew Oliver from Leland Consulting Group, and they've been working with OTAC, supporting work on housing and economic development. So Andrew, are you ready to present?
Yeah, I'm ready. Nice to see you all again on the screen, and sorry, I'm not there in person today, and I will be there next month. So, today we're talking about housing golden policies. I thought it might be nice to just recap where we sort of ended up with all the housing conversations we've been having since last fall. And then we're gonna look at the main housing goals together briefly today, and then you'll have time to review the policies on your own in the next few weeks. That next slide. Okay, so just a couple of reminders of things we've, we've talked about and where we sort of ended up after our meetings and workshops. Here on the right, you have again the housing targets by income from the county and commerce. A couple of key takeaways from the housing needs analysis work and background work that we put together prior to the joint meeting with the city council. As we saw, incomes in Mill Creek are rising, but not as fast as housing prices are rising. And this is partially because housing production has slowed down in the past couple of decades, which is something we've seen a lot around the region, now both of those trends. Household size is getting smaller and forecast to continue to decrease. And so, you know, there's a need for some maybe differently sized units, types of units in the next, this comprehensive planning grade. The population's becoming more diverse as new people come to Mill Creek. And overall, as we've talked about, the, you know, the housing that, the housing targets here are needed to accommodate this growth, help residents to stay in the community, provide opportunities for a diverse mix of people and professions. And there's a bit of a connection there to economic development, which we talked about and had a great discussion last month. And we'll be bringing those goals and policies for next month for you guys to review. So here we have the housing targets by income band on, on the right again, just for a reminder. Go to the next slide. That's the other direction. Ah, okay. So, to recap the three growth scenarios that we looked at. After we refine them in the fall and winter, so we've got your scenario one, which was basically no change in zoning. Scenario two, rezoning one hundred percent of the sub-area. Scenario three, rezoning sixty percent of the Mill Creek Boulevard sub-area. And as we know, you know, it's possible to meet the target by rezoning only part of the sub-area, as you see there in scenario three. But we, you know, in, in, in conjunction with the city council, we heard that the city's interested in moving forward with exploring the rezone of the whole sub-area, which gives us more flexibility, opportunity to really create a great place and to meet these housing needs and, and to provide some flexibility in where and when things happen. And I also wanted to just note here, you know, on the side of all of this is the new ADU and duplex legislation, which is coming in. You'll see that reflected in the goals and policies. And it is allowed on all lots, except where prohibited by HOAs. I don't think we, or we didn't explicitly say that in the goals and policies, because because the provisions from the HOAs are, are already in place. Next slide. Okay, so we reviewed the twenty fifteen goals and policies internally at Leland with OTAC and also with the city staff. And the review was a little bit different than what we did for land use and, and other elements, because we not only incorporated a review of the goals and policies, looking at how they lined up with the countywide planning policies and multi-county planning policies, which is MPP, which is CP and MPP in the, in the document. Multi-county planning policies come from PSRC, the Regional Transportation Metropolitan Transportation Organization. We also looked at the equity analysis that Clay White and LDC did last year, I believe, maybe the year before. And that analysis contained a full policy review of the twenty fifteen goal of policies with an equity framework as well. So, so we incorporated those suggestions in and, and the sort of scores against LDC's equity framework that they had done in the proposed revisions. And so we've also nested the goals and policies this time around, which I think you saw as well with land use. So each goal has associated policies around the same theme. There's four main themes. Housing supply, housing types, housing location, and affordable housing. Any questions on that? Okay, cool. So, we just have slides on the four goals. And, you know, here, first we see the housing supply goal in twenty fifteen, plan for affordable housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community. We've made this a little bit longer for a variety of reasons. Talking about accommodating a sufficient supply of housing to meet the needs of all segments of the community, including moderate income, low income, extremely low income, especially as households and seniors. I think the reason we have this list in here is because the HB twelve twenty legislation about housing needs by income, where the targets come from, contains this list of, you know, segments of the community. So it's important that it's reflected in the, in each jurisdiction's comp plan in that list. And then underneath this goal, as you'll see, there's six policies. The first one is pretty much about those targets. The second one talks about partnerships with service providers and developers to build special needs housing. Third policy relates to new county and state and regional policy about displacement risk. The fourth is about jobs housing balance, so tying in with economic development. We talked a lot about that last month. And that also ties into the economic development element of the plan. Fair and equal access to housing, which is more of like the Fair Housing Act stuff. And then at the end, we added a policy about the potential for a housing action plan. Mill Creek doesn't currently have a housing action plan. That was something that a lot of cities did during the last cycle. And it can help the city to focus future planning efforts around housing. So it's something we put in as a sort of light consideration. Yes, I see some questions.
We have several hands up and questions, so.
So, yeah, this is Dave Hamilton, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my question is, in the statement on the left-hand side there, it talks about the community, including moderate income, low income. So it started at moderate and gone all the way down. Do we have any type of a housing policy to sort of cover the rest of the population that isn't down there? Should that be in here?
Uh, it's, the, the legislation and, you know, regional policy just has a list starting at moderate, because those are the targets that the cities are required to show compliance with at each of those levels. There's not a requirement in HB twelve twenty to show capacity for higher, or, you know, a separate capacity for higher income housing. So that's why it's not in this list. I think we could probably eat at it. It's also kinda covered under all segments of the community. But yeah, it, I.
It just seems to me that maybe that should be addressed somehow, that we aren't doing this purely because of the House bill. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Gable, did you have a question? I saw two hands online and not.
Good, thank you. I'm so, get this down here. Could you explain, please, what it looks like the special needs housing? Could you elaborate a little bit about that?
Yeah. There's a policy about it, policy H one point two. So it, it just lists special needs groups, so that includes like elderly residents, handicapped and disabled residents. And the, the policy just says to, you know, work on facilitating housing needs for those groups through partnerships with developers and service organizations. It's pretty similar to the previous policy, which was in your plan in twenty fifteen. It's just a sort of a slight rewrite of that, essentially.
I guess as a clarification point, cause I know we've seen targets around the income bands. Are there any particular targets that we need to be aware of as it relates to special needs households or senior housing? I know we've talked into as a commission around senior housing, desire to have that, but is there targets that we need to meet at all?
No, there aren't state mandated sort of any kind of targets like the ones we've seen by income ban for the, for special needs. There is a, that emergency housing target, we've talked about that already for shelters, but there's not a, there's not a target for special needs or or senior housing. But there are policies around it in the, in the plan, the draft, based on our conversations that the city is, you know, would like to encourage. It's more senior housing, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll continue on. Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Next slide is goal two. Can we go to the next slide?
Next slide said that. Slow.
That's okay. Okay, so goal two, housing types. In the last plan, it just says plan for a wide variety of housing choices. So we've expanded this goal, again, sort of based on the new legislation came, came down this year, HB eleven, ten, and thirteen thirty-seven. So this lists, you know, a variety of housing types, including single-family homes, moderate density, density housing, so that's your middle housing, ADUs and multifamily units, to provide improved housing choices to all income levels and demographic groups. So, again, it's sort of more aligning with the language and the type of housing units that are discussed, you know, each discussed in the county housing policy. And there's three related policies. The first one talks about ADUs and middle housing, which of course, we already know are gonna be added to the code and altered in some ways. The second one is something we talked about a little bit over the past couple of months, reducing barriers to homeownership. So that was something we, we wanted to add based on your feedback. And the third one talks about development standards and regulations, making, you know, making it relatively easy if possible, as, as easy as possible to get things built. And that kind of relates to our conversations with Main Street and the developers as well, last fall, last winter.
It's H three goal now?
Three, yeah. So H three housing location. This is a new goal. There were, there were policies about housing location in the last plan, but there wasn't an associated sort of larger goal about it, so we consolidated those policies with some updates under a new goal that just says plan to accommodate Mill Creek's new housing units at a variety of scales and in a variety of neighborhoods throughout the city. And because we made this slide deck a couple of weeks ago, we've actually made a slight change to this. And after talking to staff, and it now reads provide, let me just read it to you, provide a plan to accommodate Mill Creek's new housing units at a variety of scales and in a variety of neighborhoods throughout the city with an emphasis in designated suburbs. So, we wanted to make sure that our conversations about the sub-area were reflected in this goal. The related policies are about moderate density and middle housing being allowed in single-family zones through the new legislation. We slightly updated, but more or less kept in spirit the discussion of design standards, architectural character, and aesthetic consistency with the existing development, which were in the twenty fifteen plan. With the existing development, which were in the 2015 plan. We talk about here the opportunities for new growth in designated subareas. Like the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea. And encouraging new housing with easy walkable and bikeable access to parks and open space, as we were just talking about. And we heard from you that both pedestrian and bike access was important in these new areas, so we added a policy on that as well. Yes, Commissioner Hamilton.
Yeah, my question is on the the three, the policies on the right-hand side of your chart there. Three of them start with verbs, but the first one, it just says moderate density. Should there be a verb to start that statement?
There is. These are just condensations of the policies. There's.
Okay, thank you.
All sentences in the matrix that you that you'll get by email. So yes, there is a verb. I remember what verb it is. Probably allow.
Thank you.
A question, just confirming. So do you mind repeating the new iteration on the on that goal? Because obviously as written now, people will take a very kind of certain interpretation. Of I'm going to build a five-story building in your neighborhood, which is, I think is not the intent.
Right, yeah, and that was kind of why we added this. So it says, it says the same thing with an extra clause at the end. So now it says plan to accommodate Mill Creek's new housing units at a variety of scales. And in a variety of neighborhoods throughout the city with an emphasis in designated subareas. That I think it's, it reads in the new way in the in the document you got by email.
Can I ask under that, are we trying to say, I mean, there has been this question about we're over our density. With our proposal and how low a densification would we go for in the in the proposed subarea? Because are we going to put duplexes in in that area? Or are we trying, you know, are we maintaining a bottom threshold there as you go forward?
That's a good question. You know, there's not a, in these goals and policies, it doesn't go so far as to talk about exact densities. There is this goal, the third, sorry, policy, the third policy, I'll just read it in its entirety, which is sort of related. It says, create opportunities for new housing growth into designated subareas. And near high-capacity transit to maximize transit investment, creating high-quality, compact communities. Reduce emissions and provide access to employment services. So there's a discussion of, you know, transitory and development essentially, but. There's and where moderate and lower density are discussed is in the policy about single-family neighborhoods. So, yeah, it it might be worth being a little more specific about that in here, so.
Yeah, this is Mandy Roberts. I might just. Add that I know our consulting team and city staff have had discussions about. The need to really take a more detailed look at the subarea with that in mind. And what would the appropriate forms of redevelopment be in different areas? You know, would there, would there be an area that would be acceptable to look at townhouse scale, for example? And I think, you know, clearly we heard from from you and from city council that. We don't want to necessarily just have a monoculture of urban form there. So is there an opportunity to vary heights and scale? So I think that look still needs to happen and we'll get, you know, whether it's. As part of the conference of plan or maybe as a follow-up to looking at zoning, we'll get there, so. And I do think, Andrew, just now that I'm looking at that goal. With the add to it, I I guess me personally, I'm kind of wondering if we even need the words in a variety of neighborhoods. Maybe we just need to say with an emphasis on the subareas. I'm just going to throw that out there for your for your consideration, planning commissioners.
Really consider that because I do, I do think you should consider something like that because again, I think people will. Take a turn to interpretation of variety of skills and.
Yeah.
And multiple neighborhoods.
Right, yeah.
I know your intent is majority subarea and some other minor areas throughout the city, not. Again, the five-story in the middle of.
Sure.
Yes, how do we, how do we clearly convey that and then at a policy level, but without getting to too much detail? No, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll let you continue.
Yeah, and I think the associated policies sort of spell it out clearly, so that the goal, yeah, could use some refining for sure. So I appreciate those comments. Well. We will take those into consideration the next draft. Also, you'll have a chance to write them in the, in your feedback to us over the next couple of weeks. Okay, goal four, affordable housing. Plan to accommodate sufficient capacity for regulated affordable housing units to meet regional goals. And the needs of mill creek residents, recognizing that these units are unlikely to be built without significant subsidy. This, there were quite a few policies in the old plan about affordable housing. Again, we sort of cleaned it up and moved things around and created a new goal that that incorporated several of those policies, the larger language about affordable housing. The fact that it is likely not going to get built by the market at very, you know, subsidized levels. And then we have policies around it that have a lot to do with how it could get built. So partnerships with developers, incentives, strategies to encourage affordable housing development. Coordination with the county PSRC, you know, everyone that's setting these targets for affordable housing. As well as nonprofits such as the Affordable Housing Lines. And supporting preservation and rehabilitation of existing housing stock, which was something that was in their previous plan. And I think we talked a little bit about it a few few months ago, looking at, you know, the importance of. Of the, you know, more affordable existing housing, yes, Commissioner Hamilton. Oh, yeah.
Let me unmute myself. Okay. Plan to accommodate a sufficient capacity for regulated affordable housing. What does the term regulated mean there?
Regulated means affordable housing that subsidizes at a certain income level. So like housing that's built on housing tax credit or any sort of official subsidized capital A affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. And then also I think the A in front is sufficient, is required, accommodate sufficient capacity, but. That's a editorial comment.
And I guess might we want to follow up on a question here at the end, at the end, the goal portion of the goal of, you know, referencing to the. Needing significant subsidy, does that imply a commitment that the city must provide subsidies?
No, it doesn't imply where the subsidy is coming from. The intention of putting that in there, well, first of all, it's, it's in both those, the. County and regional policy, so it seemed good to reflect it, but also I think the idea is, you know, it could be the city, but of course it could be just. You know, of like the low-income housing tax credit or something that a developer applies for, you know, the subsidy or a nonprofit. Whatever the source is, but there's no specificity about the source. And there's nothing in there that that talks about the city having to build it.
Chair Nolan, I also just would like to remind the commissioners that. You will have an opportunity to review these in detail and provide detailed comments. So we look forward to, you know, getting those from you and will further consider, so just wanted to let you know.
Four forty-five this afternoon email each of us. But you did have a question.
I I did, I. I I think maybe it's piggybacking off of Commissioner Berunda's. Question there. I didn't quite hear your question, Commissioner Berunda, sorry. But just, I wanted to see if we could maybe expand on the meaning of recognizing that these units are unlikely to be built without significant subsidy. I just, I want to understand that. I do understand developers need to be profitable, but I also know that they will go for maximum profit. And I think that's what we would need to be working with, that they would be unwilling to work on something that is not maximum profit.
Yeah, I think.
What you were building there, what we're referring to there?
Well, I I had, we had thought about it, I think, more along the lens of the fact that, you know, for example. A. One hundred percent regulated affordable development wouldn't be built without some other form of subsidy besides rent, right? I mean, so without something like a tax credit. In the, in the case of a mixed income development, yeah, this, I guess the subsidy in that case would come from the the. Market rate units. So the, I think the point of putting that in there is to, yes, to indicate that the city would, you know, work. To to meet its affordable housing targets through, you know, through. Working with developers to give whatever subsidy they could get, but not that the city have to provide it. Does that make sense? I I may have slightly misunderstood your question.
I think that kind of makes sense as to an answer there. Yeah. It's, I think we know that the city is not got a lot in the coffers for subsidizing housing, I would put it as. But maybe there's a way in which we could work with other entities that may be able to support such goals. And maybe, maybe that's something that we could be explained in a, you know, in a bullet later or something like that, or. And I haven't gotten a chance to look at the documents.
Yeah, of course. No, that's fine. And we can, we can follow up on all this stuff next month, once you have had a chance to sort of, you know, you're reading in comment in more detail. But there there are policies about sort of what that means, you know, partnerships, coordination with with nonprofits and other people who can develop such housing. So it's, it's, it's not intended to read as an obligation for the city to provide subsidy, although we could clarify that. If maybe, yes, Commissioner Gable.
I guess, could you, you happen to have uphand a percentage of what percent of market rate housing that's going to be? In the subarea plan?
I don't think we had any in income breakdown of proposed units in the subarea plan. We were just looking at land capacity.
Okay.
I believe that's your last slide, Andrew.
Yeah.
I slide ahead here. Any final questions for Andrew before we go to the engagement update? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. We'll see you next month and.
Thanks.
Yeah. I think this is going to be really challenging for us, and I've been reading in the paper the past couple of days about trying to put. Homeless type housing in downtown Redmond and a project in downtown. South of Ozil, Kinmore. I mean, there's just a. It's going to be a huge uphill battle to try to accomplish this.
Yeah, I've seen those articles as well recently.
We aren't the first people to get in the rodeo on this. We might get, somebody's going to try to buck us off, but okay.
Okay, it's a good point and it's nice to know we're not alone in trying to accomplish this, so. Okay, thank you, Andrew. And yes, just to remind everyone, we hope you will take a deep dive into the housing content. And we'll have a really good discussion in April about that. So we just wanted to leave you tonight with a little bit of an update on engagement activities, so you could be aware of. What we're doing and things we're planning. And if you want to go to the next slide, thanks, Sybil. We did circulate, we are circulating and it is live, a new online survey that is part of the nineteen sixty-one. Strategic planning effort. We kind of just brought in our vision questions from the previous vision survey. And co-opted them with the strategic plan questions. And it's really gained a lot more traction, so we were up to sixty-nine responses, actually, update. So when this slide was made a few days ago, we were at fifteen. Now, tonight, Jody let us know we're at sixty-nine responses, so. We're excited about that. That's showing a lot better results and will help give us more input for the vision statement for the community, so that's great. We have extravaganza coming up and that will be an opportunity also to drive. Traffic to the online survey as well as we're going to have some people boots on the ground. Walking around, talking to extravaganza attendees and asking them to respond to. It gives a very quick five-question poll that Jody's helped us put together on tablets. So if you see our folks walking around with tablets, that's what they're doing. And we hope to really intercept with a lot of people from the community and just get input right in that forum. Because we understand extravaganza as well attended and also there are a lot of parents standing in line. So it might be an opportunity to get input from them. And then lastly, we are planning to do a spring workshop series. We're in the early stages of thinking about that. The thought is to try to do something similar to what we did before the pandemic. With the Mill Creek Boulevard plan, which was really, I thought, quite successful. We, we had individual workshop sessions with different groups of varying interests. So we met with the seniors, we went to senior center, senior housing, met with seniors, we met with a youth group. Which was actually super fun and enthusiastic. Business owners, we had a business owners group, property owners group. So we would strive to do something similar over the course of a couple of days and have different groups come in. Give us some input on key topics around the conference of plan. And that will just help us as we continue to refine goals and policies to get some input from from the broader community. So if I would just invite the commissioners, if you have thoughts about groups that you think. It would be good for us to connect with and invite to these sessions, we would love to hear that. And any other suggestions that you might have for that workshop series? I know several of you participated in that when we did that a few years ago for the Boulevard project. So I'm going to pause there and just see if there's any comments or suggestions on the workshop series.
Thank you, Commissioner Gable. Is there any way, Mandy, that you could send us just a copy of that online survey and. Notify us of those spring workshops? I haven't, I don't know where to look on the website to see when they are, just so we could stay in the loop.
Absolutely, Commissioner Gable. So we can send you a, we have the QR code for the survey. We can send that to you right away. On the spring workshops, we don't have the dates set or anything really charted out yet. That's, that's why we wanted to get some input from you. So if you have some thoughts about specific groups that you think we should engage as part of that process. Please let us know tonight or send an email to Sybil, because we're starting to organize that and plan for that.
Okay.
Do you have a link or plan on going to any of the the service organizations like the Lions Club and the Chamber of Commerce? And I can't think of the names of them, but they're.
Rotary, maybe.
Rotary, yeah, that's what I'm trying to think of, Rotary and those types of things.
Great, great input. Yeah, exactly. A service club session would be really good to have, yeah.
Commissioner Brials, I know you have a question.
I I I heard you say that you could send us the QR code. If if you're going to send it via email, could you actually just send us the web link? So I don't have to take a picture of an email in order to get.
Absolutely.
The link. Thank you. And then additionally, on those spring workshops, I know it sounds like you're. It sounds like you do intend to reach out to a lot of different kind of groups. I have, I can't tell where there might be a gap if I don't know the whole list, so.
Right.
I know that we've got some senior centers that might be interested and I imagine you're going to talk to them. I imagine you're going to talk to any of the HOAs. I imagine you might reach out to PTAs. Especially since you're planning on hitting the extravaganza, egg extravaganza. That that might be an appropriate way to hit families, especially, I keep saying hit, interact with. All these different types of people, even in front of grocery stores in the area or something like that. I don't know if we might, essentially anywhere you might see a Girl Scout cookie table set up. Maybe you could stand next to them and say, would you like to fill out a five-question survey about this city that you're in right now? Those, those types of things maybe are just, you know, ta- take advantage of, hey, somebody else already did their market research. I'm going to go just stand next to them for an hour and see if I can get three to three to fifty responses. I don't know.
Great, thank you.
I'm sure there's any other questions or about engagement.
I think we had a couple more slides after this.
I think somebody could be in an Easter bunny suit to extravaganza to attract attention.
I'll pass that along to our team at the office and see.
See how it's received. Okay, thank you.
I guess, are you volunteering, Commissioner Hamilton?
No, I'm not. I'm going to have, I'm going to have surgery on Monday for, to get a new shoulder, so I won't be available on thirtieth.
You won't be in bunny shape.
I will be unbunny.
Well, good luck with the surgery. My mom had that surgery a couple of years ago. It went swimmingly, so they've gotten a lot better at it.
I'm really glad to hear that.
Okay, well, why don't we go to next steps? That's what it was, just to kind of remind everybody where we're headed next and then we'll be done. So this is just sort of a recap of what we showed you in the first slide, but we'll be. So this is just sort of a recap of what we showed you in the first slide, but we'll be um. Kind of going through this progression now where we introduce goals and policies at. A meeting, and then at the next meeting, after you've had a chance to really read them and reflect and put together your comments and get those to Sybil. Then we'll have a discussion about those, and similarly to land use, we'll. Look at, you know, what are some of the common themes that we heard in your comments, or what are some areas that need to be resolved? We'll, we'll go through those together in April. And continuously, so that's all these slides are really saying, we don't need to read them, but. All the way through, maybe go to the next, next slide, I think we wrap things up. In August, and um as Sybil said, you know, we'll be mindful of. What's happening in August, and if we run into an issue with a quorum, we have a little bit of room in our schedule that we can continue into September. Or we might need to hold a special meeting in September, so. Um we'll kind of cross that bridge when we come to it, by by the time we reach September, though, we really would like to be in the stage of. Here is the full comprehensive plan, including not only the goals and policies that you've already reviewed and we've gotten your input on, but. Other content, introductory content, community profile, some of these things we've presented in the past, but. Just have it all stitched together for your review, and then. You also will need to make a formal recommendation to city council. About the comprehensive plan, so we'll wanna, I hope you draft that in October, and then it will go to city council from there.
Any questions?
That's it.
Commissioner?
For the September one, do we do public hearings or anything like that for, or that's still just internal to us?
I don't recall.
I don't, I don't believe we need to do public hearing, because it will be going to city council for the formal adoption process, yeah.
Okay, so I think that completes our briefing and discussion items. So next on our agenda is for the good of the order, are there any good of the order items, commissioners, staff?
No.
Okay, so then uh next is adjournment, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting of March twenty-first is adjourned, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, bye.